Ben. Richard, will you do the prayer and Ben, you do the pledge?
Sure thing.
Are you here so we can negotiate in a further?
Do we know this is wrong?
Yes, yes, yes. It's what happened when I didn't see it beforehand. That's what happens when I didn't see it beforehand.
It was probably last month I'll be going here. What is that? That's his?
Yeah. What Bud did, yeah. Is this the one that I wasn't present at? Probably, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure of that.
Yeah, you want to do it.
No, that's what they asked for, the sixty-one twenty? I know it's on there.
Oh, no!
It's a county judge!
Oh, no.
That's your public hearing. It's in.
Yeah, so that's each one of them, right?
Cisco one thirty-six, they tried your one thirty-six.
I knew they had it somewhere. What else could I have?
It says that's the one you ordered out, just one you ordered.
I must have been here.
This is, that was the regular, and that's the special we had to make.
There are my. Are you? He does, huh? I guess he pretty.
Right now?
I guess it's not, so.
The judge, I'm trying to find the judge.
Yes, sir. Your honor.
It really worked back there. For y'all.
You know, it gives life to say your honor.
Gee, that's, no, this has not occurred. I don't even sit down, we can go.
Well, you never know.
I'm not very hopeful on that part.
This is a regular meeting of the Eastland City Commission. It is August fifteenth. I've asked Richard to lead us in a prayer and Ben to lead us in a pledge. Richard?
Most gracious heaven, Father, Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the wonderful community to live in and you've given us. And, Lord, we do ask you to send some rain upon us. We do need some water badly in our whole area, Lord, and everything is dried up. They've been having to remove cattle from there and everything. But, Lord, we just ask you to be with us now, and I know you'll do it in your time, but sometimes we'd like you to hurry. But, Lord, we thank you for everything you've done for us, but just ask you now to guide us tonight in each and every one of these issues that we deal with. Let it be in good, for the good of the community and for the good of their nation. We just ask you now to bless it and be with us. We ask you, amen, your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I ask that you would silence your phones if you have not done that already. We got public comment, I have nothing for public comment. Approve the minutes of the July eighteenth and the August third meetings. You've got a copy of those in front of you.
Mayor of item six, paragraph one, it says there's a four point zero two nine acre tract to be annexed, when actually it's four point two zero nine, so I would suggest that correction to the July eighteenth minutes. And with that correction, I will remember that being approved.
Say it.
Got a motion from Cecil and a second from Richard with the adjustment to item number one to a four point two zero nine. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Financial report?
Let's go with August third.
Oh, that was just one, you did the one? I apologize.
I move the minutes of the August third meeting to be presented, it'll be approved as presented.
Okay, we've got the motion for the August third minutes to be approved from Cecil.
Second.
Second from Richard, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I voted for that since I was one of the three members here. All right, city financial report.
You'll see that we had another awesome month for South Penn in August. That's always good news. We're getting closer to the end of the year. On your budget summary, I made a couple of adjustments so that you know what grant funds are in the utility fund, because that was kind of skewing our numbers. So I've separated the grant funds, revenues, and expenses out separately so that you can get a true picture of what's going on in the utility fund. And then, on the financial report, the summary report, I've made some notes because there are some line items that are way over budget, and I've made a few notes so that when you see those big numbers, you kind of know what's going on. Of course, some of it's gasoline in some departments. I've got pending coding corrections. Our DLO expenses are in there, and it causes one line item to be really over budget. So I've just put a couple of little explanations in there.
Anybody have any questions for the financial report from Leslie?
Speaking about being over budget, we're about halfway through the year here. I see a lot of these are in the eighty percent.
We're seventy-five percent.
We're seventy-five percent.
Well, this is, yeah, this is June.
This is June, we do an October budget, so that's where it's seventy-five percent.
Okay.
Yeah, and I mean.
I mean, a lot of material prices are going up across the board.
Oh, boy, are they.
Yes. So that, I'm assuming that's what a lot of this here is, because some of these are in the, you know, eighties.
Yeah, we're over, we are over budget in a few, in a few, and a lot of it goes back to, if you look at it, it goes to gasoline, chemicals, building materials, something of that nature is how it's.
That comes out of Leslie and JJ's paycheck.
Okay.
Okay, we are at seventy-five percent of the year.
Okay.
Is what you just, the question, we do October fiscal year. Anyway, any other comments or thoughts? Thank you, Leslie. Public hearing on annexation.
Yes, sir, this is something we've been talking about for the past couple of months. EEDI has asked the city that four point two zero nine acres that is behind Bartez in front of El Reno be brought into the city to just square off the business park. We already provide water sewer services out there, and they would just like to be brought in. So when somebody does buy that piece of property, they're already part of the city, they're, we're not going through this at a later time.
Okay, is this number two on our agenda?
That is, yes, sir, that is, it'll be the first reading of the ordinance to do that, but we have to have a public hearing ahead of that.
Okay, well, I'm gonna do, just to be fair, in case somebody saw that as item number two and thought they had an extra five minutes to get here.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna, let's do number one, and then we'll have the public hearing between one, number one and number two, in case someone held up for that. Anybody have any problem with that?
No.
All right, we'll go to item number one, discuss consideration of the request by Ranger and Cisco College for hotel motel tax event funds for sponsoring the third annual Ranger, Ranger Roundup and volleyball tournament. And they are here.
We are here.
Who wants to go first or second?
Where do you want me, in front of the camera, or where do I need to be on the camera? It's okay if I don't.
You don't need to be on the camera.
Not my good side. Well, thank you for having us again. It's been a little over a year that we were here for the second annual Ranger Ranger Roundup. This year, we have four teams coming. Fortunately, we just had a team pull out like last week from the tournament, and we had to scramble and make a new schedule. I think you got an addendum schedule in there. The budget number's a little bit different from last year. What we're here is asking for consideration for some of the tax, the hotel motel event funds. Last year, you were gracious enough to give us thirty-five hundred dollars, which we graciously accepted and used to help make it as good a tournament as we can. In fact, two of the teams, the two farthest teams away actually coming back this year, one from past Oklahoma City and one from Kansas. So we were able to put on a good tournament for them, and they came back even with budget costs being outrageous now and transportation costs going higher and higher. So we feel very proud about the fact that we were able to run a good tournament and get these back here. All the teams will be staying in Eastland County and obviously having all their meals in and around Eastland, Cisco, and Ranger area.
Do you commissioners have any questions? You've got a copy of what their expenses, how they broke all this down. They're asking sixty-one twenty, and they'll split that evenly, thirty-sixty between Eastland.
The sixty-one hundred is our total expenses. At the end of the day, say last year, we asked for thirty-five hundred, and we're more than happy with that unless you're in your good graces and want to go higher than that. So just to clear that up.
With pleasure, Jim.
I move we give thirty-five hundred dollars to the Cisco and Ranger College for the Ranger Ranger Roundup.
Second.
Got a motion from Richard for thirty-five hundred dollars and a second from Ben. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Good luck, thank y'all, appreciate you doing that.
You're all invited.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next weekend.
Next weekend.
Can I get the information about Portis and my checks?
Yes.
Okay, we'll open, it's six-ten. Close enough, we'll make it six-oh-nine. And I do this for five minutes to allow someone to get here, and they can't say we opened it and closed it, but, so you've got five minutes to visit, whatever you need to do, and we'll move on.
Thanks a lot.
Thank y'all. Be safe.
Thank you very much.
It's a pretty good increase.
It was, it was surprising. I mean. Yeah, that's good. Because you don't take advantage of experience. What do you don't do, I guess? Vacation costs.
Thank you, you did a great job on that. Teacher wanted to, thank you. A lot of people.
Oh, sir.
Coffee memory.
Oh.
Oh, oh, oh.
Oh, boy. No. Come on, oh, the group.
We were looking at the budget summary page, and I went back and we looked at last year's numbers compared to this year's numbers. We're actually, yeah, we're eighty-seven percent, but last year's I used one percent. And I kind of take that as a win for the year, the way profits blew up before then. This year, Matt, it's not surprising.
I mean, I guess it's been, they're predicting some of a slowing down of inflation, I would think. That's what they're saying, only put somewhere maybe we might have hit peak inflation.
Call it, hope so. Of course, we lost all three bad directors, we didn't get all those.
But, I mean, I was, I couldn't remember what we did last year at this time, but when we pulled the numbers, I was like, not bad. Any, do you want?
I might get the, what do you want? I don't think. They didn't get it.
Well, they're, I mean, I think that all the schools are busy with, yeah, they're, they're hurting teachers, they're hiring, and then they go do stuff, kind of, they're nervous of the certification process.
Randy Bridges, right now, they've got, just a warrant.
Kathy, don't want to go back to teaching?
Yeah. They try to get it every year.
I'd be beating on doors, too.
Could you do it a little worse, Jim?
Gee, they've tried to get her.
I'll become a go-getter, I'll take you to work and go get you.
Yeah, they're, they lost their softball coach and geometry teacher the same day. And I told all the principal, I said, "Oh, I'll have to coach Tom Bond, Kathy can do geometry," he said, "We'll do it."
Don't say that too loud.
Yeah.
Conrak sitting at your door.
Yeah. We heard.
I show at six-fourteen, and we are out of the public hearing for the annexation, which is item number two on your agenda. This discussion and consideration, the first reading of ordinance twenty-two dash eight-eight-seven, an ordinance annexing the here and after described territory to the city of Eastland, Eastland County, Texas, extending the boundary limits of said city to include said property within the city limits and granting to all inhabitants of said property all the rights and privileges of other citizens and binding said inhabitants by all of the acts, ordinances, resolutions, and regulations of said city. JJ?
Yes, sirs. Like we just talked about, it's just to basically square off that business park. Don't really know why it was left out of the last annexation, but we just kind of want to make it easier for whoever does come and purchase that piece of property from EEDI that they're already in the city limits, they don't have to worry about it, and, I mean, we provide all the services out there to it anyways. There were no objections with EEDI in doing this. They, it's voluntary, they asked to be brought into the city.
Okay.
I move that we pass ordinance.
Why is the, why the triangle right above it? Why is that still outside the city?
Oh, that triangle that's right above it is not out of the city, it's actually within the city limits.
Is it, okay.
Yes, sir, you can see that, the purple line up there on the right-hand side?
Yes, sir.
That's the city limit boundary, which you can't see from the blue square that JJ put on there, so you can see, see the lot we're talking about, is that purple line comes in, goes over, and follows the rest of that line of the, of the lot there.
Does that triangle not really been used to anyone?
I think this is, that's part of the reason why Tom is wanting to bring this section in now, is because you can have both that triangle piece and this, and it can be used to extend that property a little bit more.
Okay, good.
Basically, just to square it off.
Yeah.
We've got water and sewer after, that's all, you spent that money on. I move that we pass ordinance twenty-two, the first reading of twenty-two dash eight-eight-seven.
Second.
Got a motion from Richard, a second from Cecil to pass ordinance twenty-two eight-eight-seven. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number three, discussion and consideration of first reading of part of twenty-two dash eight-eight-eight, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Eastland, Texas, approving a negotiated settlement between Atmos City Steering Committee and Atmos Energy Court, Mid-Tex Division, regarding the company's twenty-twenty-two rate review mechanism filing, declaring existing rates to be unreasonable, adopting tariffs that reflect rate adjustments consistent with a negotiated settlement, finding the rates to be set by the attached settlement tariffs to be just and reasonable and in public interest, approving an attached, an attached, attachment establishing a benchmark for pensions and retiring medical benefits, requiring the company to reimburse ACSC's reasonable rate-making expenses, determining that this ordinance was passed in accordance with the requirements of the Texas Open Meeting Act, adopting said savings clause, declaring an effective date, and requiring delivery of this ordinance to the company and to the ASCS legal counsel.
Okay. We do have an Atmos representative here with us. You remember, months ago, we, we made a motion and passed our resolution to become part of a steering committee to help negotiate on our behalf to get a better rate for Atmos Energy. They requested a hundred and forty-one point three million additional fees and funding. They went back and forth and settled for a hundred and fifteen million in additional revenue, which they projected will be four dollars and sixty cents more a month per home meter and fourteen dollars and thirty-four cents per commercial meter more a month. And that's really about it.
Could you clarify one thing for me? This, this is approving a negotiated settlement?
Yes, sir.
Between Atmos and the city?
Yes, sir.
And it's declaring existing rates to be unreasonable?
Yes, sir.
Are, do those, is that a contradiction?
Yes, sir. I don't, I don't speak legal ease, and I, I basically, the way I read it is, yeah, we think it's out of line, but, but there's not much we can do about it. We, 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 we agree that, that it's too much, but we're gonna pay it anyways.
On the one-hundred percent existing rate, are they talking about the right now?
Current, right now.
They are unreasonable.
That's right, so we're gonna give them a hundred and fifteen thousand bucks.
Yes.
That ought to be reasonable.
Okay.
We gotta pay James a salary.
Well, I just wanted to make sure I had my money right.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I mean, like I've, like I've said through this process, you know, we're a little too small to step out there and negotiate on our own. We have to get attached to one of these steering committees.
Everybody's gone up that route.
Well, I just have a problem with that word, it says declaring existing rates to be unreasonable, but I move that we put it on first reading.
I'll second it.
Got a motion from Cecil and a second from Richard to approve ordinance twenty-two dash eight-eight-eight. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Budget workshop.
Okay. Everybody was delivered with binder this past week. Really, in the budget, we, we put the tax rate numbers in there that we proposed on the August third meeting, and for the time being, what is basically in the budget is a four percent across the board raise for every employee and a lawnmower for the Parks Department at this time. I think it's just prudent that we kind of hold off on capital items at this time and kind of see where the economy is gonna shake out in the next few months. Be happy to take any questions.
So we, we'd actually lowered our tax rate. We lowered our tax rate, but because of the evaluations by the appraisal district, then we're going to bring in three point four percent more money.
Well, actually, what's great in the extra money is behind tab number two, on the first page there, at the very top, right-hand side, last year, we said that we were, we figured the tax rate on a levy of one million, two forty-three, nine sixty. Now, on this year's tax worksheet, which you have in there also, they've adjusted the tax levy to one million, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three. So effectively, because of whatever adjustments they have to make from one year to the next, we started out at the no-new tax rate, actually generating more tax revenue than was calculated for last year.
And the majority of that is in new property?
No, this is just, part of it is just, I don't know if it's broken down up here, the total amount that we're going to raise total property taxes is forty thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. Twenty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars is the new property. The majority is new property. The other little bit is just the difference between the eighteen thousand, six hundred and two dollars, that is the difference because of the different numbers that they have to use. So, one way or the other, because of our new, new property improvements, it was gonna say we have a tax increase, no matter what we did as far as the tax rate goes, so.
Yeah, I understand, but I just wanted to, you know, maybe lower our rate.
Yes, we lowered our rate, definitely.
Majority of the increase is on new, new property.
Yes, it is, yes. I have a page that was showing what last year's rate was versus this year's, but I guess I didn't. Oh, there it is, point six-one-five-three-eight-oh, and now our proposed rate is point five-two-three-oh-five-seven.
That's all we can do, isn't it? Try to do the best we can.
Yeah.
I thought we were gonna have a snack.
I mean, they make it like it's almost read in Egyptian, to figure this thing and.
Amazing, I just, I went on there two days, couldn't explain it.
The average taxable value of a home in Eastland this year, or this year's taxes is a hundred and one thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars. Last year, it was eighty-something. So it's gone up a bit, the average, average taxable value. There will be a worksheet coming out in the paper that has this information on it, because, because we are having a tax increase, we have to have a public hearing and a meeting, and we're required to publish this information in the paper. So it will show last year's tax rate and this year's tax rate, and the average home value, and how much the taxes are on last year's average home value and this year's average home value at the rate that we propose, and just information like that, that we're required to publish now ahead of the public hearing.
So as it stands right now, without any modifications or changes, for the average residents in Eastland, it will be less than eight dollars increase per year, seventy-five cents a month?
Yes, sir.
So our new tax rate will be point five-two-three-oh-five-seven.
Yes, sir.
Anybody got that? Any questions?
Is this clear as my life always?
Yeah, you're right.
If they don't like that, we can turn over two pages and go through that document.
Oh, yeah, that's why.
You want to test? Come here. You've got a vacant chair. This is your economic development chair, right here, come here. All right, so everybody's got that plan. You've got a budget, you've got a tax rate. Everybody's happy.
Yep, and don't forget, we will have two more meetings prior to the next regular called commission meeting. I believe they're the sixth and seventh. I believe they're the sixth and seventh. I have to go look, don't quote me on that. I only have my phone on me and, uh, to basically finish out the budget process. They say you have till October, but you don't really have till October to finish it.
Oh, no, they don't say you have till October anymore. They have to have it early.
Yeah, but, no, it's, it's set pretty tightly, so.
Great. Anything else on that? Any budget? Any more budget stuff we need to worry about? You got nothing?
No, I've got nothing if y'all got...
Is she going to get the calendar?
Yes, sir, she's going to look at those two dates.
Okay, budget workshop's over. City manager's briefing.
Uh, we've begun the first paid, uh, part, excuse me, of the GLO project. I've been in contact with a few homeowners that are interested in the buyout program. They have been ma- made aware that there will be an August twenty-third meeting at five-thirty right here, that the people from the GLO office and Judy Linford's office will be here to answer any questions. Um, kind of the way I've been handling that when I've been talking to these people is, we're more or less acting as a mediator, putting people together. We do not make offers. We really have nothing to do with the money portion of it. We put these people in contact with each other and they kinda settle their differences on how they wanna proceed. Um, I'm still waiting on this application that they said that they have to fill out. Uh, the states, they turned us loose, but don't have all the documents ready yet. Anyways, um, I had a Zoom call with the water board and H D R, which is doing our hydrology study, and they're making good progress. There was some questions just about moving forward, and, um, a lot of what's holding everything up is this archaeological dig. And, uh, I've reached out to as many people along the river that I know. If y'all know any, I'd be, please tell them to contact me, because the state's wanting a written signed letter that they have permission to go onto their property from the river. And it's a lot of property owners and it's in a lot of different hands. But anyways, um, highway six, the sewer, sewer line, they finished the first part. We did have the new, uh, truck stop Jays asked us to, uh, if they could hook on to city sewer, uh, and the contractor said he was gonna be in this area, so we had a little bit of ARPA money, and I asked him to go ahead and hook to that manhole to hook that business up. That'd be just one more commercial account to our, uh, system. Uh, Tech Stop, Tom and I went over to Cisco to, they had a meeting about their ramps and stuff like that, and we hemmed the Tech Stop people up after the, uh, meeting just to kinda, hey, where do we stand on certain stuff? Uh, the sidewalks, they're getting ready to do kind of a region-wide sidewalk deal and they think where we should be in this group. And we talked about signal lights and the ramps out there. Uh, at this time, they're, they're not projecting to move ramps. Uh, there were some, they do studies in their region and state studies on, basically, they have a list of which ramps across the state of Texas are the most dangerous. We're not at the top of that list yet.
I don't know why not, that one out there by Dot knows if you're traveling toward Olden.
It's horrible.
It's hard, it's hard to see.
Yes, sir.
Oh, it's sure is, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Until they're halfway up the ramp, you can't see it?
Uh-huh, I, I, I agree.
Unless you're driving.
I agree, but they had, they had their data.
Yeah.
Um, to go along with it. Uh, they are going to rebid that for the signal lights, that whole project, uh, either in March or April, and they're watching the prices of materials, is what they were saying right now, and they're kinda trying to make some adjustments, you know, 'cause the plan was to do sidewalks underneath the overpasses and stuff right there and down to, uh, Walmart and stuff. They're seeing if they take that out and do some different electrical stuff where they were gonna get the lights all to sync up electronic by, I guess, basically a fiber optic cable. They said they can do it manually, um, so they're, they're looking at every possible avenue to cut costs and make this project happen sooner. So, we talked about the dam and the dig, we're still waiting on that, so that's about all I got. Okay, questions?
Any questions for JJ? What's the update on our water?
The update on the water is, uh, the district, I mean, they've been working hard since last week trying to get that, that, uh, door open. Um, they've been in contact with engineers, contractors. Uh, yesterday, they did drain the intake tube itself to go down in, and they are working on, uh, fabricating a piece to try to open that gate. It's a, it's a, it's a tough fix, it's not easy, but they're, they're, they're learning a lot as we go. Uh, there's no timeframe yet. Sooner the better, is what we're hoping.
Yeah.
But they don't want to give a time to be done. They thought they would've had it, but they don't.
Is it top intake, is it, is it still submerged?
No. See, that, that's, that, okay, it's not a, uh, level issue, it's a volume issue, yes. That first gate's out, it's probably three-quarters of the way out of the water now. The other day, when they went to open the second valve or second gate, I don't know the technical term, what is it Bobby? The rod that you...
It didn't open.
Yeah, it didn't open. Whatever opens the gate broke and...
I got the technical part of this figured out, it didn't open.
And so, it's a volume issue, not a level issue this time.
Well, okay, don't say that. Don't say that. If the lake wasn't down, we wouldn't have a problem.
True.
So, it's a level problem.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
The technical problem is, we don't know if the lake ran out.
They're using pump supplement, that first gate being open. And it's still not enough water.
Yeah, let JJ show you the picture of how they're getting our water and, and we'll really conserve it.
We don't, we don't wanna know that.
We got three pumps out there.
Okay, anything else, JJ? Code compliance?
Commissioners, we started July with twenty-six cases, carry open thirty-one cases, closed thirty-four, gave us a total of twenty-three cases. Out of all those cases, we had, uh, forty-six separate violations that were opened and we closed sixty-four violations. Uh, big numbers on, uh, the report for last month was, we had, uh, ten thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars worth of fines either sat out or paid. Um, one individual served a hundred and sixty-seven days for code and animal control citations. Those fines that he served for, four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine. Then we had another individual that, uh, was picked up on some si- uh, I guess warrants or citations that were a couple of years old. Um, and she, uh, sat two days in jail and decided that that wasn't for her, so they ended up paying five thousand, three hundred dollars of her fines to get her taken care of. So, that's it for, um, really for, uh, code compliance as far as planning and development. Uh, Family Dollar is, uh, moving along. We've gotten, uh, set of civil plans from them to see how the property's gonna be laid out. Oh, slash Dollar Tree, sorry. It's a twofer, we get a two for one sort.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. It's a Family Dollar and Dollar Tree. So, you can go buy a Family Dollar, if you have one dollar left over, you can build a Dollar Tree, gets a...
Except it's a Dollar and a Quarter.
Oh, sorry. I didn't count for a place.
It's just separate doors. Two separate stores.
Two separate stores. What's that? Yeah. Yes. So, with, in addition to that, uh, down there today, as I'm sure everybody's seen, they're putting a lot of steel down to expand that parking lot out there. They are, also, they've got that building toward pieces inside, they're redoing it, um, adding, um, where top line on the south side is geared to be a family stock for individuals, Day's is gonna go the other way and be a true truck stop. They're gonna have showers, redoing the bathrooms, have a lot of coolers for people that are coming and going to the lake, um, and a lot more, uh, expanded. Day's Little Valero on the interstate, highway six interstate. Yeah, go, go swing by there and look at that. They got a, they're putting some real money into this, there's a lot of steel going on the ground to make a concrete parking lot.
And they're redoing the building.
And, and the building's a complete, uh, too. And then also, um, Manhattan Homes, they're, they're moving along, completing, uh, their buildings. They're gonna have their, I think they're gonna have the last couple of buildings up here in the next couple of weeks, so it's going, so.
Good. Did you say a hundred and fifty-seven?
Uh, that one person sat out?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
How much is that cost?
The charge is controlled.
Coming up for that one, I don't...
Thirty-something dollars a day.
I think it's thirty-six dollars a day.
You're smoking the office about all the time.
Yes, sir. Some people, they don't mind three hots in a cot, and other people don't like it at all. They'd rather watch Murder She Wrote Home.
Anything else for Tony? Chief President Judge?
We had, uh, another busy month, you know, working hard and blue glows, so all our kids on the town, well, yeah. We had, uh, interesting, number twenty-three individuals arrested, arrested for sixty violations. Heard of sixty on this one. Had any business checks. Uh, our, our colleagues, drug paraphernalia stuff is still, you know, still what it is, or DWI's, or still averaging, you know, one, two, three a month, you know? Uh, we did have a, a sexual assault of a child slash continual sexual assault of a child, which it was an ongoing, ongoing deal, uh, that we, that Scott McDavid did a real good job, um, working and investigating. Uh, our animal control officer's still doing a bang-up job. She, I mean, see her's deal, she wrote eight citations this month and seventeen the month before, and twenty in May, and thirty-two in April. I mean, she's, she's doing it, and she's doing it the right way. She's doing it with, uh, trying to get people in compliance, you know, by giving them multiple warnings, and they don't comply, then she starts issuing citations and stuff, so. Other than that, we're headed for another hot month in August, and we're just, school starting. Uh, we did just, we did complete, and the mayor was there, and so was Mr. Osnick, uh, was there for active shooter training that we did, DPS, uh, put that on, and it was really, really good, really good training, had different scenarios and, um, really, it was, and it was all-day deal, it was eight to five, uh, all day, and they did it, uh, last week at Seibert, and then they did it, uh, in Cisco the next week, so. And we do, and, you know, and, uh, Uvalde's got everybody pretty sensitive about that deal, but that's training that we've been doing the last several years about this time of year, uh, trying to catch it right before school starts, uh, so we didn't have a issue about who's in the building, so. We're just, um, before, we've been putting the, the, uh, training on, but getting DPS kind of gives us a different look. It also brought in some, uh, uh, some cool stuff. We've been using airsoft guns, they brought in ammunition. Uh, a lot of the guys found out that ammunition hurts a lot more than airsoft. Uh, airsoft'll sting you, but the ammunition'll break the skin, so, so training, training under stress is, is the key to reacting under stress. Uh, we do have a new school resource officer, Josh Nichols, who worked for me before, uh, was working at the sheriff's office, uh, went to work for me up at high school and already catching up, uh, doing things, uh, as far as, uh, we've got new security stuff that's going into the schools, and he helped, uh, do the walkthroughs on that, and really looking forward to taking Kevin Willis's place, who left with my superintendent, so. I did make the comment that if Cochran comes back to town, he better army crawl in and army crawl out.
Yeah, Cochran, yeah. You can see him on Facebook.
Fire chief, go in.
Good evening, thank you. Um, I'll zip through June real quick. We missed, uh, missed June's meeting last month as we were attending a structure fire in Cisco. Uh, so, we had forty-nine calls for June, which was a little less activity than we, uh, we normally see. Uh, that put us down, that, that's how it's three every, and it was one point six calls a day, thirty-five in the city, twelve in the county, with two mutual events. Uh, we've installed zero smoke detectors, and we had seven incidents after ten o'clock at night and before seven in the morning. One structure fire, uh, three grass fires, and, uh, we, uh, went to one recreational vehicle that was on fire. Twenty-five medical assists with seven motor vehicle accidents, one public assist with eleven false alarm and investigations, and we, uh, had zero members, uh, zero applications that month. July, we kinda picked back up to our normal, uh, was getting back into some of our normal stats. It's seventy-four runs, uh, for the month, at two point three, eight calls a day, and that puts us at average of two point four calls a day for the year. Uh, and that's, uh, we're averaging over twenty-twenty-two, um, seventy-three calls per month. It says seventy there, but, uh, that adjustment wasn't made, seventy-three calls per month. Uh, we've had thirty-eight calls in the city and twenty-nine in the county, and those, those percentages run the same every month. We, we tend to, uh, slice that line right there every time. Um, the mutual aid events, we went to six, um, and we installed zero smoke detectors. Um, that's kind of a program that will attack again, uh, once the weather starts cooling off and school starts back. It's kind of a fall thing that will really start pushing out again. Uh, we made, uh, nineteen calls, uh, in July after ten o'clock at night and before seven in the morning, and that was a little bit of totaling. Some of those calls ran back to back to back, and, uh, the volunteers, uh, were out with staff, uh, it's, got some consistent nights in a row. We were kinda, it started to get some sleep deprivation there. Uh, we picked up, uh, we attended five working structure fires in July, which again, uh, that ties our really kinda all-time, and that, that put us at, uh, uh, doing a lot of work in July on, on house fires. Uh, the grass fires picked back up, we had ten. What we're seeing in the grass fire, uh, in the activity is we're not steady, steady every, every day. Uh, we are seeing some lulls, and we can only contribute to that to the community is at, at a heightened awareness, and, and I think that really people are taking caution in their outdoor activity and what they're doing. Uh, but what we are seeing is when these fires start, they grow big, fast. Um, and so, of those ten grass fires that we attend, um, I believe we, we, uh, worked with the forestry service on at least half of them. They, they, they got pretty good. Uh, we had two vehicle fires, both of these vehicle fires were eighteen-wheelers, uh, within blocks of each other and, in the middle of the night. Uh, we assisted a EMS system twenty-seven times and, and went to ten motor vehicle accidents, three public assists, fifteen false alarms or investigations, and we had two hazmat incidents, one with natural gas and one was the, uh, we, we had a spill, uh, that we worked with. And in July, uh, the, the, uh, the problem of putting these together early, Roma would disagree, but this one I put together early, we actually had three volunteers join the fire department in July, uh, not this one, so. Uh, that brings our total roster up to twenty-seven and climbing. We're still looking forward to new membership, and, uh, we invite anyone who's interested to, we would love it, I would be a part.
Can you keep Sam interested, or not?
Yep.
He's keeping me busy.
He's keeping me busy.
He keeps the projects lined up. He can't see the finish line. He'll have to. Any questions on any of those, or my math?
Anybody have any questions? Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Oh, just a couple of notes. I'm sorry. I was just asking about the stats there. We did receive our ARPA funding from the county. That came in at twenty-four thousand. We were allotted twenty-five thousand. So, the project developed out at twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and eleven cents. And so, that project is in motion. We look forward to having that done. I'm hoping the vendor is supposed to call me next Monday to start moving forward, and we're looking to the thirty-day turnaround. We had three members attend the Texas A&amp;M Municipal Fire School this week, which is a week-long fire school. So, yeah, we were grateful for them that they took a week off of their time and went and attended some special disciplines, which was hazardous materials management and trench rescue, which is a pretty unique discipline. Not very common, but when it happens, that is an extremely hazardous, risky event to first responders mitigating that. So, we got a little expertise in that. The, we had a brush truck go down again with a significant repair, and that repair was filed with the Texas Forestry Service emergency grant for seventy thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars. We received that. Then the bill was a little more, so we were dealing with the forestry service in recuperating the additional amount. So, we did get that funded. That repair was funded through the forestry service.
Seventy thousand dollars for a repair?
Seven thousand, four hundred and forty-nine.
I thought you said seventy thousand.
It initially came in at ten thousand.
I can see seven, ten. I thought you said seventy thousand. I'm going to say, boy, that'll be a really nice repair.
Yeah, but that was reimbursed through the forestry service. We do have a new fire marshal now. The fire marshal office got moved back down to the fire department. So, that's, we've done a couple fire alarm tests, and so that program's getting wings again.
I like it.
So, we graduated two members from the Cisco host of TCFP Fire Academy. We graduated two members. They began in the early, early, early spring and continue. And then we have four members that will be enrolling and participating through the fall TCFP Fire Academy. So, we're getting some good training and good, good forward. And that's the last thing. At the fire department, we are in the process of reevaluating our training program. We are trying to modify and make where we can expedite and focus pretty significantly on some of the more tactical level disciplines. So, the challenges that we're facing with is we have an extremely veteran end of the roster. We have an extremely new, tenured part of the roster. And so, we're working the command staff underneath the deputy chief is the project, is to get that program where we can expedite that training so we can move, or get trained and talented newer people to try to fill some of those gaps with the driver operator and some of the leadership roles. And that's all I have to report.
Well, see, I have two things.
Oh, I do. Actually, there's three meetings coming up. The first one is August the thirtieth. It's a Tuesday at noon. It's the public hearing on the budget. And then, there will be the first reading of an ordinance adopting the budget. And there will need to be a separate vote by commissioners to ratify the property tax increase in the budget. And then on September sixth, that's also Tuesday at noon. It'll be the second reading of the ordinance adopting the budget, the public hearing on the tax increase, and the first reading of the ordinance adopting the tax levy. And then on Thursday of that week, the eighth at noon, we will have another call meeting just for the second reading of the ordinance adopting the tax. September eighth, Thursday. The tax people, the appraisal district.
I thought you said nine and five was a Tuesday. Nine and eight can't be a Thursday.
No, the sixth, September sixth.
Okay, the sixth, okay.
Yes, sir. And then the eighth is Thursday, isn't it?
Okay. The next one is the thirtieth. Okay. Anything else for the fire chief, for Leslie?
I'm going to adjourn.
Got a motion. Zach wouldn't hear. They're going to be here all night. Motion to adjourn from Richard. Second from Cecil. Oh, Ben did it? All in favor, say aye. All the same time, motion carried. Thank y'all very much.